One of my, Mayor, one of my intentions here is, I mean, I have a lot of thoughts about this, but I want to kind of keep this on topic, is to have the City Council be more engaged with this element of the city. And I mean, the City Council as a body, because it's one of the major items that was in our Option 1, Option 2 analysis because of the situation in 2008. And what happens on that board has a direct impact on the operations of the city, because if we have to put more money, and then we have, which started in 2009, then it's going to essentially, in this environment, take money away from something else. And so, I want the City Council as a whole to always be, you know, I think we need to pay a little more attention to what's going on, the employee retirement system, and also the actuarial analyses that we receive, not just from that, but the Health Benefits Trust, and also the retirement funds for firefighters, because it has enormous impact on what we can offer as our services to our residents through our general fund.
Further?
I think there's some other just practical issues with it also, in that I may not know till the day of the meeting that this person couldn't be there, the person that would be sitting in wouldn't have the agenda, wouldn't have any of the backup information, wouldn't have anything to even, basically, you're going to sit at the meeting and not have any of that data, except for, we can give you a copy at that meeting, where normally it goes out three or four days ahead of time for all the board members. And I just think the continuity and the practicality of it doesn't.
I agree.
Councilman Slater?
I think those are valid points. I can see council still having its say on what goes on, but I wouldn't be in favor of having an alternance. I think those are valid points.
I'm here.
Councilman, Mayor Potemplai?
Well, rather than having an alternate to address council and how it is concerned, if you increase the number of members, that's a valid concern to include another council person or just a number. If you want the council to be more engaged, as you're saying.
Well, Mayor, perhaps it's one of those things that we can just plant the seat and think about for the future, because, you know, it has a fairly significant impact on what we do. So I think that the council needs to have more involvement in it, if you will. And that's just my thought. And I thought that when I was on the board, too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilon Beltrame?
I understand. I just don't know that how sending a different person to the meeting will do that. You're exactly right, that we need to pay more attention. We get the actuariales, and we all kind of panic when we don't add up exactly right. We call John or John says, what are we doing about this? I'm not sure that having been to a meeting three months in advance of getting that report would have made any difference in that reaction. So if there is a set of informative memos that we need in the interim, that's one issue. How, going to a meeting to discuss what we're going to buy and sell, we all know that the lowest risk, the highest yield, needs to be the mantra on that. So I don't see that fixing the problem as you see it. That's my issue with it. We don't get anywhere by putting an extra person. I think the material is getting to somebody who's, quite honestly, kind of a straw man because it can be gone. But I don't see the benefit. I think there's another way to fix that problem. That's right.
I'd like to make a comment about that having served on the board. I think that the idea and the makeup of the board was set so that it be equally spread among the different entities that serve on the board. It was so that certain sections were not having more say-so than others. And I think that was what was thought out, to set the balance of the board was set up that way. Am I correct, Mr. Zerai?
Yes.
That was the original thought in setting up the board. And so, to put another member on, I think, skews that. Another council member on that skews the numbers. And I think it was carefully thought of when it was originally set up.
Councilman Horlach?
Yes, I was actually going to say, I think I would rather see somebody with a professional background in, you know, say, CFP, or somebody who has the background of, if we're going to have a direct managed board, there's an issue of interest. For example, if one's a retiree, and one is guaranteed their pension no matter the performance of the board, versus, and this is a perspective gap, versus a member of the City Council who essentially, if there's a poor performance of the board, is going to have a situation where they no longer have as much money to allocate for expected programming for the city, whether that be library, or police, or fire. The person who is the retiree is going to get that retirement no matter what, because it's essentially backed by the city government and so forth. It's just a matter of putting more money in. So the onus really becomes on the City Council as a body, and therefore, it's in our best interest to have as many people who are professionally trained, or are calisters, or people from the City Council who are there, who have that perspective of what happens if the fund doesn't perform as well as it should. So I just wanted to plant that. I think we need to move on to that.
All right. I don't think we have consensus on how we want to do that at this point. Okay, let's go to, is there any other by ordinance one?
Madam Mayor, Animal Control Appeal Board is one that is required.
Animal Control Appeal Board is by ordinance?
It is by ordinance, yes.
Doesn't say that on the sheet here. Have they been meeting regularly?
They actually recently met because they had an appeal where a person wanted to have carrier pitches.
I haven't seen them.
They have not met, prior to that, it was a long time before they had.
So is this ordered?
Is ordered?
So we must keep this in place because it's required by ordinance, or we have to have an ordinance change? And then what would happen?
Yeah, you could certainly amend the ordinance. One of the functions of the Animal Control Appeals Board is they do, they are authorized to hear appeals when animals are not allowed. It provides an avenue for them to have an appeal of denial. So somebody, some entity would have to take on that responsibility. So that would require an ordinance amendment, but you may decide that some other entity is the appropriate body, because they are very few in far between.
So if we keep it in place, it would be a board that would meet as needed? They would meet regularly just to be meeting, as if they had some specific thing for their agenda? Okay. Councilon Beltrame?
Where is it that we designate the number and types of animals that can be kept?
Some of the zoning ordinance. Yeah. The, I believe it's the criminal court. I mean, Chapter 90 sets forth the parameters of the appeals board, and they're kind of all, there are a number of locations where they are.
Yeah, but the zoning ordinance doesn't really deal with carrier bringing and things like that, farm related things.
But it does set forth an amount of land that's required in order to handle.
Well, and that's what I'm thinking of. We could put it at the BZA. It needs anyway.
And fulfill it that way.
You can assign other duties to the BZA, because they can't handle all, they can't handle all the appeals.
Not that many.
They haven't been meeting.
Different types.
No, no, but this one, the Animal Control one.
Mayor, I'm certainly able to explore it. If it's the consensus that you'd like other entities we could bring forward, what ordinance amendments would be required.
Sure.
Why don't we explore that? Want to? And then we, if we decide, then that we need to keep that board in place after looking at that information, we can do that, or if we decide that BZA could handle it.
Might be helpful to know how often they've met in the last five years, too.
Right. Well, not very often. Okay, so I'll put a question mark right there. Okay.
You still have Parks and Rec and personnel?
I'm going through to see what else we have by ordinance here. Oh, we didn't do historic district commission. Historic district commission was mandated by state historic preservation act, so we need to keep that one in place. Okay. We'll go back to the others after. Okay. Parks and Rec Board by ordinance. The recommendation is that the ordinance requires that it meet at least every two months, and it could be quarterly without reducing efficiency. So if they're going to meet quarterly, excuse me, do we need an ordinance change? Is that correct, Mrs. Bell?
I do think that's correct.
Okay. What's council pleasure on that one? Councilman Horlach?
One other thing is, and I know we're telling you this, but the Troy Days Committee, if that's no longer here, then that toggle probably needs to be changed as well. The Troy Days rep on the Parks and Rec.
Right. Yeah, we're going to get to that one. That's not an ordinance. So do you want an ordinance change, to change it to quarterly, council? Okay, so can we have an ordinance change on that one, to quarterly?
Madam Mayor?
Council?
I do think Councilmember Horlach does make some good points, that we just simply need to be aware when we're dealing with some ordinances, and they have specific titles, like a representative from, and a representative. And I think that's his point, when the ordinance addresses that. So we just have to track that.
Right.
A good point.
Okay, what else by?
Personnel Board.
Personnel Board created by ordinance, and it's recommended that we continue to meet on an as-needed basis. Council, you in agreement with that? Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Pardon?
Advisory Advisor Committee, created by ordinance.
Okay. I think we ought to keep that one in place.
Yes.
For the hearings that come, I think that, and that is recommended to council. What do you, how do you all feel? Do you want to keep that one in place? Okay. Okay, let's go to the hard ones now. Go back to the top, right. Advisor Committee for Persons with Disabilities.
Madam Mayor?
Councilon Beltrame?
When I really began to delve into this process, I started with the Futures Report, and looked to what committees they wanted to create, or have us create, or how they, but interestingly enough, in reading that report, I felt like they had some messages for us. And one was, if we are going to use citizens, use them meaningfully and effectively. Nobody wants to just come meet. And be sure that we communicate with all sub-populations. We are, by any measure, highly diverse, and all of those groups need to be dealt with and feel a part. And both social and physical connectedness within the community. So when I got to some of these committees that were single-interest committees, I began to wonder if we could not create a Citizens Issue Committee, or the Futures Report talked about an Environmental Advisory Board. What if we had a Citizens Advisory Board for general issues, and we put on it those special populations of persons with disabilities, and seniors, and youth, and people with an interest in environmental expertise? And did something like that, instead of running four committees at the status quo. I have something else I thought about for the ethnic issues advisory committee, but bored. But that was kind of the way I tackled this. I don't know what anybody else's mode of operation and thought was.
The way I thought about it was, if the committee was serving a purpose which gave us valuable information that staff or council could use in determining something, then I thought the committee should stay in place. If it was a committee that was really no longer serving its purpose, some of those members may wish to serve in a different manner, but because we were cutting back on numps of staff and their ability to handle functions that they need to be handling on a day-to-day basis, I thought that some committees we could do away with. There's recommendations for some that we could. I think that we might explore the idea of a committee, I think maybe the lifelong learning kind of thing, rolling something together, but then we'd have to set the parameters for what that committee is dealing with. And I didn't know if we want to do that tonight or not.
Yeah, Mayor, it might not even have to be our committee. I go back to, just because it is a community-wide committee, why do we have to be the administrators of that? I mean, we have a significant document here that says that our citizens are willing to invest their own sweat equity in building community.
So the way that it's been set up for these committees was that they'd always give information then to the council, because we have the power to decide something once they've decided.
And those groups still can?
If other groups want to have, there's groups in the city right now that meet, have nothing to do with us, and don't report to us at all.
You're missing the point. The point is, we would ask the community if they wanted to replace these committees with something of their own. We are doing away with these committees, and we would suggest a plan for that being done. I mean, we can create another government committee, if that's what you want to do. We have citizens give us advice all the time. They can come as their groups that are out there. We know those groups are out there. Louise, you know that. So I went at this, trying to figure out, okay, how can we offload those committees and still get the input necessary? Because the input necessary from the ADA law, and the person who truly has transportation issues, are probably two entirely different.
Councilon Curran?
I think, thank you, thank you both. I do agree, visions certainly did have an important role in how I read the committee. And in going back and looking at, they had a lot of key connections. And something, a refrain we've been talking about as we've been streamlining government is the silos. And many of the committees that you see on here, Councilmember Beltrame, I think you may have called them a special interest room. And that's how it was at one time. We need one for this kind, and then one for that kind. And yet, in the visions, they are all poured together. And I think the synergy that's created from a diverse group of folk is undesirable. I'm very interested in having the Citizens Advisory Board for Special Interest be called upon, the same way as you see some communities through the newspaper or whatever, we're getting together to look at, help us when you can. And that would have a diverse appeal. So rather than just saying, no, no, the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities only look at that, regionally, Mobility Task Force or anything, everybody looked at the same, at some of those issues, and gave a different viewpoint. So I am more inclined to, rather than keep the silo system, which at one time was certainly valuable, again, this was a time when the way to reach council was through a set of minutes, now people reach us in every kind of way, through email, or through in-person, or through phone, or the immediacy of citizen input has changed significantly since some of these committees were formed. But I do like that. I do, as you mentioned, Mayor, the Lifetime Learning Committee has a lot of opportunities there. It doesn't have to be run by us, but it's a neat opportunity for a diverse group of people. They list senior citizen, they list Troy Park and Rec representation, they list school district, youth, all of those poured into a committee to give a diverse perspective on an interesting issue. So I would think that we could streamline some of these, and yet, offer opportunities in general for others.
And the advantage to having a group discuss something, and then pass on a recommendation or comments to us, is different than when an individual does it. Because when a group, like when we sit down, we may have different ideas, but we talk about it together, and then we get an opinion or a vote on it based upon the group rather than the individual. So I think there's advantages to having a group, but how it's set up, that's a different matter. But we do have some other boards here that we may want to talk about whether we want to keep or dissolve. So do you want to, do you want to keep or dissolve Advisory Committee with Persons with Disabilities, is my question? Pardon?
Dissolve.
I don't want to keep them in this form.
Okay. So let's, let's put it.
I want their input.
Okay. Mayor Potemplai?
I think we're trying to come to consensus here. We don't want to ignore persons with disabilities. Nor do we want to ignore senior citizens, or any other group that needs to have a voice. The problem really is here, that these committees are taking up an exorbitant amount of staff resources in time. We want them to have a voice, we want to listen to them, but we don't have the staff infrastructure to continue the way we're going, we just can't afford it. So how do we structure these committees so that they have a voice? Senior citizens are important. If we say we're not going to have a senior citizen advisory committee, or personal with disabilities committee, that's sending a bad message to the community. And I know that's not what you want, Councilon Beltrame, or any of us here. We want to get more community involvement. So it's going to take some restructuring, but we've got to be very clear how we communicate this, otherwise, we're going to alienate people. The seniors are going to say, well, City Council doesn't listen to us. It doesn't have to be a meeting, in my mind, where we have to have a staff person representative and taking up time. But they need to have a venue where they can have a place to meet that's free. It doesn't necessarily have to be council-appointed, I don't think, but a place they can meet free, whether it be here at the city offices, or they be at the community center, and have a way of communicating that need, or their voice or opinion, to the council in some structured way. Rather than having 50 people come disability and speak at the microphone, or 50 senior citizens who have an issue come and speak, and say, that's going to happen, but we have to change. We can't afford to go the way we're going, we just don't have the time and resources. So we have to think outside the box a little bit about what the committees look like, without alienating anyone. Give them an opportunity, but don't necessarily have to be appointed by the City Council, but still give them the voice. So that may mean dissolving some of these committees as we know them today, but allowing them to reestablish, you know, and still have a voice, but not require the city time and resources. Does that make, is that what you're trying to lead to with the community type? But you've got to let these people have a voice, whether it be disability citizens, and there are others here, but maybe not in the way that we do today. It's just too cumbersome.
Councilon McGinnis?
I guess I'm a little bit confused. Are we suggesting that we dissolve these groups, these advisory committees, but make sure that we're letting people know we still want to hear from them? I'm just having a difficult time going from the structure that we've known, which I think there are issues with, to, you know, carte blanche, just saying, you know, but please let us know what the community is still thinking. I would think it would be, I was kind of hoping originally, that we would take all of the single-issue advisory committees, that I don't think that we're getting the full benefit from, because I don't think we've really been tasking them to do certain things. So if they're meeting, and they're talking about what they want to talk about, but there's really no connection between information that we might want from them, and responses that we might have for them after reviewing their minutes. So I think that whole process is kind of falling apart, and it would be good for us to restructure it in a way, which is smaller, fewer purpose. But I don't know if I'm comfortable saying we're just going to take them all, do away with them, and hope that a group forms and comes to us and gives us their opinion. I think we kind of have that already, happening in the community, and it's probably going to continue to happen. So I was hoping that we would do something kind of similar to what you had suggested, but maybe a little bit more formal, if we had one board, like a citizen-issue board. And I guess we probably would have to talk about how people would get on that board, because I know we're trying to get away from appointing certain people that some people on council may want in a position, and we get back to, you know, a smaller version of City Council that doesn't always agree. I mean, I think we would really have to figure out a way to get people on that board and get involved, and maybe have some criteria for what we're looking for. But I would feel more comfortable if we put something together like that, where we could task a group for a specific input that we would want, give them some direction, then they wouldn't feel like we've completely kind of abandoned what a lot of citizens are used to in terms of giving input in that structure. So I don't, I don't know if there's a way to do that, that everyone can agree on, but I guess my wish would be that we move away from all the single issues, but yet, still have something in place that's a bit more formalized than just telling everyone that we hope they can go out in the community and get together on their own, and forward us their opinions.
There are some committees that are listed here that we haven't talked about yet. Perhaps we're getting stuck because we're on these two particular ones. Are there any that people would like to, like, for example, we didn't indicate yet, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Committee has to, you need to stay. That was by resolution that we had that. Part of, actually, they, okay? And we didn't talk about the fact that Troy Days Committee, since there's no longer a city festival, about eliminating that committee. And the Youth Council, because city staff is going to meet periodically with representatives of the Torres Strait District, the youth. And there might be other organizations to perform that function, Boys and Girls Club, or a student government organization at school. What's your feeling on those? And then, oops, over here.
Maybe we should do those, too.
Yes, and then there's a couple on page four, too, that we can talk about. Then we could go to, if we want to combine those others. Councilon Curran?
Hi, Drew. I think there are a lot of opportunities for youth, and the idea of having some of these other, either the citizens, that would be a youth, or the lifetime learning, that would include youth. We do have youth representation on a number of our boards and commissions, including Park and Rec. Often, we have representatives on a planning and so on, so I'd be inclined on that one, and Troy Days. And then we have cable. And then we have cable.
I don't, I think, I agree that there are youth organizations that can, but I think it all goes back to Maureen's point.
Right.
We haven't asked them anything.
And they just kept them meeting.
Yeah. And they've kind of set their own agenda. I would, I, as I said earlier, I would put specific youth representation in with the seniors and the persons with disabilities because it-
And resources.
Okay, so are we in agreement then to do away with the Troy Days Committee and the Youth Council? And then determine how we're going to do, what about Traffic Safety Committee while we're on that page, page six? Traffic Safety Committee, I think gives us good information. I don't know how often, if they need to meet every month or not. What's the recommendation about?
Bill, how often do they meet now?
Well, we're set up to meet once a month, Wednesday, but we as needed, we haven't met for the last, last year we met six times. So we're pretty much just as we have items.
Do they meet every other month?
As needed.
Yes. I think as our city was developing and subdivisions were developing, when I served on that committee ages ago, there was a lot for that committee to do. Now there isn't, but maybe with redevelopment and things that they do. So I would just keep the Traffic Safety Committee. Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'm wondering, as we go through this, and staff is writing madly, as I can see, that if this is currently listed as meeting monthly, that the change would come as needed in any of these that we, as we go through, we can change that.
Okay. All right. I want to go back to, how about Library Advisory Board? The library, given it was closed or had its own board, so it said this committee should be dissolved, and I'm agreeing with that, and they'll find out November 2nd. So, okay.
Question about that.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Do we want to immediately dissolve it, or do we want to keep it at least through June 30th?
Councilwoman Beltropini can't close that?
I don't think we immediately dissolve it. But I do think that if the library, if a millage plan is not passed, the library will have to close, and there may be some closing processes that they could be helpful, you know, vetting, so to speak. We don't, I mean, they tried to give us their advice to keep the library open, we didn't take it, so we aren't using them. I mean, that case could be made.
Yep, they did give resolutions-
Right.
-in support of keeping it open, but it just, you know, that didn't happen. I don't know, I think that November will be quite determinative. And should there be, frankly, should a millage pass and a new board be appointed, I think this would be at odds with that.
Oh, pass?
Yeah.
Right. It would be appointed temporarily till the citizens would vote on the people.
Correct, I understand. However, I don't think it would be advisable to continue the Library Advisory Board and appoint-
Right.
-that. I think that that would be wrong.
Are we all in agreement on that?
I'm not sure.
No, I'm not, no.
The timing.
It is the timing. I don't-
It's not.
That's what we're not.
I think we need to wait, keep it until June 30th.
Till we see what the circumstances, it may not be till June-
We'll discuss it in November.
We can discuss it, okay.
You can revisit it and see what it looks like.
No.
All right, how about Ethnic Issues Advisory Board and Historical Commission? It says Historical Commission should be dissolved because city staff would interface with Historical Society on matters regarding operations of the museum and Historic District. And the Troy Historical Society will assume the role of the historical commission? So you're in agreement with what's recommended here?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
As long as the Historical Society is-
Is that, Dr. Uke, you okay?
Well, we can't go to the, we're not going to go to the, any comments from the public yet, otherwise we'll lose the meeting.
Well, how about Lorraine then? She's not public.
No, that's right.
The only suggestion I would make to council is that that is a private nonprofit organization, and perhaps it's a little premature to assume, because they have provided support for many years, that they have the ability to take on additional responsibility. That rather than assume they would take on that responsibility, council or might want to have a conversation with them about what the expectations are, and then see, they may have to entertain board resolutions or bylaw revisions to take on that role. And so it isn't a simple matter of, yeah, they can do that. I think you need to have a conversation with them first and a discussion about what your expectations would be. And then they would actually have to convene another group or a committee that would assume those responsibilities.
Okay.
Well, this is not required by anything, so I guess-
Historic, yes, but not Historic Commission.
At this point, I would say dissolve it.
And then, and then we can have a discussion with Historical Society, see what they want to take on, what they don't want to. Many of those people that serve on the historical commission are members of the Troy Historical Society, so we'll see. But we can't open that up necessarily right now for a discussion on that. Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
I guess I would rather there be a, especially for a committee that's an advisory, of advisory nature, that's providing an advice to the council for ongoing activities. And at this point, the library and the Historical Museum are still functioning. Facilities, I would like to see us, particularly as we're speaking now, in the case of the Historical Commission, continue until it's no longer a function of the city. And if it's going to be taken over by, if there's going to be another body that is going to be providing oversight, then there needs to be some sort of a transition. So that would be my suggestion.
Other discussion on that? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, I would tend to, I guess, agree, Councilman Hallowak, about the fact that we need to have a discussion, and we're going to be postponing the Library Advisory Board for a couple of weeks. I mean, we're making a lot of headway about-
Right.
...decisions we've set, you know, we're going to make for several months now, about what we're keeping, and we can really focus our efforts on what we're definitely getting rid of. And I think we've been served pretty well by the Historical Society and the community, and if there's an opportunity to have a discussion with them about how we'll make that transition, I think we should at least do that first. And I do ultimately think that probably the commission will be dissolved, but to have that conversation first, just so we can have a smooth transition. I mean, I think everything related to the museum and all the changes that have been happening this year, they've been very receptive and been able to provide us information. So I think if we had a conversation beforehand, we could do that fairly quickly, and I would feel a bit more comfortable.
I'm just-
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'm just looking at what it says on the piece of paper though. I mean, it just says two sentences, "Historical Commission should be dissolved. City staff will interface with the Historical Society on matters regarding operations of the museum and Historic Village." So although we say, well, we as council will have this conversation, we as council really won't be having those conversations in real life. A lot of this really does come down to city staff again, so in any of these, our role is-
I'm just referring to the recommendation that we just received from someone who I would consider probably more of an expert on that transition than myself, so that's just me.
Well, some of the lines are at odds. I agree. When I went through this, like, one would say one thing and one would say something else. But this one was pretty clear on that first sentence, so I don't know what I'm-
Councilwoman Slater?
I think after getting everything, I'd be in favor of dissolving the library and the Historical Commission when they stop functioning. They're going to move the house here in a couple of days, and maybe there's some, in the meantime, we could let them know we're going to dissolve these commissions when they no longer function, which would be June 30th.
But what we need to remember is that the Troy Historical Society is moving the house, building the house. And the Historical Commission is charged with the buildings that are at the actual museum site. And so it's yet to be determined what is going to happen with the museum site based on what they're working on right now, as with the nature center. But I don't want any of these committees that we're talking about to think that we don't, we haven't valued and don't continue to value the things that they have done for the community. We want them to know that. But we're just peering down and reorganizing, in some cases, how the committee's going to function, and if it's going to be a city committee, or if it's going to be, you know, with another group. We don't have any jurisdiction at all over the Troy Historical Society, at all, just over the commission and the Historic District Commission. Councilwoman Beltropini?
So to that end, how can we eliminate the Historical Commission now when they are going to have to be instrumental in the closing operations of the museum?
That's why Councilwoman Slater indicated we should wait to see what's going to transpire there.
We'll dissolve those when they are-
Okay. We'll talk about whether we will dissolve or not.
We should tell them that-
Okay. All right. Are you in, are you in agreement with that, you all? Except for Councilwoman Kerwin?
I should still say city staff's role in that. I mean, that's, that's what I think it comes, that's my confusion on the Historical Commission's role and the city staff's role on the matters regarding that role down. And I say the same thing for the library as well. I think a lot of that is staff-driven.
I just think June 30th is a good drop-dead date, because that's when it's gone.
Could be.
We could, and we can see what will transpire. Okay. What about Cable Advisory Committee and Charter Revision Committee? Page three. I personally think having the seven members is fine. Cable Advisory Committee, I don't think we necessarily need the board anymore, because we have representation to the ICCA. At one time, we had the Cable Advisory Committee when we were setting everything in place, when we had our, the ordinance for- Councilwoman Beltropini?
Just keep working.
You're looking to-
We got conflicting information. We got, management says there's no reason, and then from the Community Affairs Director, we got it was vital to have a citizen perspective. The other piece of that is-
No, I don't think that, I don't think that's our, what, I'm seeing head shaking here.
This was written by Cindy, I believe, wasn't it? Cindy, it's part of it?
That's what it says. And that's why they're meeting on an as-needed basis. But the other thing is, we need to think ahead as well. What happens to our ICCA representation in a year? Do we know where that function will go?
No, I don't.
Well, kind of need to have it, so we either have to make a plan for that or keep the committee. That's my position.
It sounds like that the city needs a representative, right?
It only needs to be one person. I don't think they need a whole committee to do it.
Oh, I know. I know it only has to be one person, but to disband the whole committee when you know you're laying off the staff person that has the job and you don't have a plan.
Well, it certainly has to be somebody who's knowledgeable about cable functions that we provide in the city.
I'd like to ask Cindy to respond to this, to this matter. She's the most knowledgeable on this issue.
Well, the Cable Advisory Committee themselves decided not to meet anymore-
Right.
-because they felt that they weren't really doing anything related to cable. So they're the ones that really told me they didn't want to meet anymore. They said if staff needs some input from us, you could call us. And we, I know it was quarterly meetings, but it was probably, sometimes it was twice a year, maybe three times.
And I'm working with Cindy and John on the ICCA issue.
Dr. Fleming, do you see?
I'm dropping it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that's my recommendation, that we drop it, and then we figure out what we're going to do about having a staff person cover ICCA. Okay. What's left that we didn't talk about? Advisory Committee for Students and Citizens and Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities.
Advocations.
And Ethnic Issues. And I think that it might be a good idea to have somehow people from each of those boards that want to meet together for some kind of group. I don't know how they'll set it up, though. Like, I mean, I don't know if we should set it up. They should, you know, you, Councilwoman Beltropini and Councilwoman Kerwin are talking about some kind of committee forming, but how is that going to happen? And is it our responsibility to do it or not?
Well, Lifetime Learning, this was the recommendation of Visions, in Visions, this is on page 27. Lifetime Learning incorporates all of those senior citizens advocacy issues and so on. So it seems to me that that might be something to look, look at, and Lifetime Learning might be something we want to talk about in November regardless-
Okay.
-because change is coming.
Okay. And are we talking about taking some members-
Yeah.
-from each of those and making it be a committee that would be seven people? Or are you talking about a bigger committee?
Well, they have specifics in here. I would like to honor the Learning Task Force that's mentioned in here. We could look at that and talk about that come November.
Okay.
It does mention here, under Ethnic Issues Advisory Board in the book, that they, that they have morphed, for example, it mentions the interfaith group, they're now doing diversity training. So they have really rolled out into a different kind of advocacy role that is something that, that is natural, I think, that you meet as a group and decide, hey, this might be something. It is organic, that's the term. Morphing may not have been such a good term. But it is organic, and they are doing things. So I don't know that we need to hold them back from all of the different things that they're doing. And I think that they have agreed, it says on here, to come as needed. And I think I might say the same thing for the other two. Under senior citizens, it says, the recommendation in here is, continue on as an advocacy group. Councilmember Fleming mentioned a place to meet and so on. For those of us who've attended some of those meetings, we know that immediately after the meeting, they eat lunch together in the, in a room. So I mean, that might even be a better place to meet, would be actually in the lunchroom with a whole bunch of seniors. with a whole bunch of seniors and have a, have a meal and have a talk at the same time. I think it would be good advocacy that way. So I would think for those three, that it might be a good idea to offer the opportunity to join something with a focus, like a Lifetime Learning or, or the Citizens Issues Task Force.
Okay, so the, so the message that we want to send out to staff and the members that are on those committees is that to dissolve the committee as it is separately, but then form some type of a Lifetime Learning Committee with people from those committees indicating if they'd like to serve, setting up a, I mean, you know, we have to, there are going to be people that are watching now, and staff members, of course, that are watching now, want to know specifically what council wants to do with those groups.
Well, it, it says in here on page two of our thing, continue on as an advocacy group.
Right.
And, and that's actually what's been going on. It's kind of neat, when the seniors do meet, they do talk about Meals on Wheels, they do talk about all, so they, they are an advocacy group.
Right.
However, it would be without all of the-
Okay, well, that's what I was asking the rest of council.
I would think that they, they may choose to be, continue on as an advocacy group, or may choose to, to take an invitation to join one of the task forces.
Excuse me, are, are both. They may continue as an advocacy group, which I would think they would like to do.
Right.
But they need a place to meet and, you know, free of charge, and then maybe they want to be part of the Lifetime Learning or whatever community group there is, give them that opportunity. But I think that Advisory Committee, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee for persons with disabilities should have an opportunity to meet, a place to meet, free of charge, and have their voice, and if they want to submit something to the city council, they can come forward to council.
So, but not have a staff member be there, and so it will actually be a dissolving of the committee as it is now, because as it is now, it's an appointed committee, appointed by Councilmember.
We recommend city manager take your heads off.
Oh, I didn't see you over there.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming took care of the question I was going to ask, and that was if you wanted to have staff attend, and the answer is no, so I have the answer that-
No.
-to the question that I did not ask, so thank you.
Let them meet, but no, no staff, advocacy group. And then also give the opportunity to, to meet with one of these other committees if they want to have representation.
Well, I think that at one of our study meetings, we need to flesh out what we're gonna do about a, a Lifetime Learning Committee kind of thing. Not, not try to flesh it all out tonight, but I think it's something that we could do. That way, people that want to use their abilities from those committees they've been on could flow into that.
Absolutely.
What do you think? Or she want to go on and flesh it out right now?
I like, maybe I like to have a little more perspective about what Lifetime Learning is gonna be, because it sounds like it's gonna be a miscellaneous committee. And I think before we dissolve, especially with the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, which I think serves as a, a good, well, I think it serves as a good, should serve as a good liaison between a very large and active component of the community and the city council. Before we get rid of it and create a new committee with nebulous name, that everything else is being dumped into, I'd like to have a better idea of what its focus is going to be, and, and how these interest groups are going to have their voice heard and not drowned out in the coffee that potentially could resolve.
Ryan?
Yes, Mr. Slayer?
It may help the council in their deliberations if we went back two or three years in their minutes and see what recommendations were made to city council. That may help identify their focus as well.
Well, then that would have to be a piece that would have to come to-
Just in the minutes, it wouldn't be hard to-
Come to council on it, so.
Sure. That'll give you a sense of what they've been doing for the last couple of years.
Right.
And they only speak to the resolutions as a subset of the public body.
Right. Well, mainly, the Senior Advisory Committee's been talking about lunch and whether they're getting the, whether the lunch providers were giving the service, and we changed providers for that, and we, those complaints about that seem to have gone away.
But we'll take a look and see what recommendations were made from these bodies and-
Right.
Is that the deal?
I'd like, I'd like to see that, because I think they've made some recommendations regarding signage and size of signs and so forth at different intersections, so they have to take them, how to be active.
They've been very good advocates, again, Meals on Wheels, very important representatives, but also very important representatives. I think that something that shouldn't get lost is, for example, on the Park and Rec, rather than calling a representative from the senior advisory, it could be a representative who is a senior, rather than from the Youth Council, a representative who is a youth, so that we would hope that, that opportunity, currently, they used to send, I believe, seniors sent to not only Park and Rec, but also to Troy Days. So these opportunities to serve on other committees, there were, there were appointments. So I know that that'll be kind of flagged. The idea is to still have that represented. But again, without, without the cable casting and without the full, full commitment of staff, really, as an advocate group, they're really outstanding, and that, that really should be made to continue, meet as council, Mayor, I'm sorry, Fleming points out, to meet in a free environment and continue to find advocacy work.
Do you want to go over some of the Lifetime Learning things that were suggested or not?
Well, I think it's 11:20. I think you made a good point. I don't, I don't think that anybody who sat on any of these task forces, and I did not sit on Lifetime Learning, considered them nebulous. I think that they had some specific preferred futures and that they really delineate quite well. So perhaps before we meet and talk about some citizen-specific groups, and I think Councilmember Valdemany, it's not, not only what we, what we know out there, is people want to have a meaningful thing and don't want to drag on meeting after meeting after meeting. So that's something that we need to, to look at, and we, in fact, do need engagement and do need advice. And I'm very excited about that possibility, but not at 11:20 at night. It would have to be one of those times when we can actually have time to look at that.
Okay. So that speaks to what you had asked about with the committee, what, what they would do.
No, I, I still am not sure that all of the different voices are going to be heard on one committee. And, and I still feel that the, there is a use for the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, so that, that, that still stands. But as far as if we're gonna create a new committee and what its task is going to be, that, yeah, sure, we want to hammer that out when we're low pressure. But just, just so that everybody knows, I'm not in favor of expanding the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I think it can be maintained. I don't think that you necessarily need to have staff at every meeting. I don't know that they necessarily need to meet 12 times a year, or even eight times a year, no.
And I think the suggestion of looking at the minutes to see what recommendations they've given us will help us in determining whether we're gonna, you know, what the focus is.
Sure, and, and you need to find out how you're gonna be able to allow a, an external group to use our meeting rooms for free as well.
Right.
Yep.
There's another thing to do. Okay, anything else on this?
I mean, I just want to clarify that the Charter Revision Committee, I thought that there was, I know it's, you know, it's a little long, but I don't know, is there consensus on that?
Leave it at seven.
Seven minutes.
Okay, we're trying to clarify on that.
Okay. Nothing else, someone's adjournment.